Good evening. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Camilla, will you please lead us?
At federal allegiance, Trump passed as the United States of America, and through the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and every nation.
Thank you. She's a future selectman. So tonight, I first want to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And we have our town manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, and our clerk, Janice DeRose. And we have our Connors here. Thank you so much for coming. And we have our chief of police here. And I was wondering if you'd like to come up to the podium because we have an invited guest, Camilla Giron Gordado. And she helped us with the pledge this evening. And our chief has some words that he'd like to say.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good evening.
So tonight, we'd like to recognize Camilla. I'll get into a brief description of what happened. So on Sunday, November 5th, at 2:37 PM, we received an emergency 911 call from Camilla stating that her mom was choking and couldn't breathe. She did not panic. She maintained complete control of her emotions throughout the length of the 911 call. She gave critical updates to our dispatches, followed the instructions that the dispatches gave her, as well as assisted with the translation to her mom, who speaks a limited amount of English. Upon our arrival, she came running out of the house, directing us to the side door where her mom was located inside the kitchen area. She continued to maintain her composure and assisted with the translation to our officers, as well as the firefighters and EMTs that came on scene. We found her mom laying on the floor with her head on a pillow. She was conscious and alert, but having a very difficult time breathing. With Camilla's help, we were able to sit her up, determine that she had swallowed a piece of chicken bone. Her mom was then transported to the Marwells Wakefield Hospital. It was there that a small piece of bone was discovered clogging her ear away. So tonight, we would like to recognize Camilla for her outstanding efforts of bravery, heroism in dealing with a very stressful situation, potentially tragic, that not many nine-year-old children would have been able to get through. We're very proud to have people like her living in our community, and I'm very proud because she actually lives on my street. So we'd like to present her with the Saugus Police Department Life Saving Award. So this is the Life Saving Award. And then I want you to keep this letter. Keep this letter, too. I think the board of selectmen has to...
Hold on, Danny. Hold the microphone.
Yeah. Let me just pull this down.
So Camilla, you're a hero. How do you feel?
Good.
Did your mom want to come up to the podium with you? And Camilla, can you tell us where you live?
I'm with my mom. Her name is Alina.
And where do you live? What's your address?
26 Saugus Ave.
Wow. And so you were telling Selectman Riley a little earlier about exactly what you did. Do you want to explain it to the rest of the board?
When I was playing with my baby brother in my house, in the living room, my mom and my dad were eating soup of chicken. And then she started choking on a piece of bone because it was a cross. And then I came running to the kitchen to see what was happening. And then she told me to call the police, and I called it. And I said that my mom was choking on a piece of bone, and if they could come quick. And then they sat to lay on the floor with the pillow. And I told my mom everything, and then the police came right away.
Wow.
Wow.
Excellent. You are very heroic. It's amazing how you were under control that whole time, and you must have been scared, too.
Yeah.
So I'm sure each one of the board members would like to say something. Selectman Riley?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Well, like I said to you earlier, that's wonderful. You know, that was a brave thing to do, to stay so just focused on what you needed to do to help your mom. You know, you're a brave little girl, and just thank you from our board, and good luck with everything.
Selectman Serena?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Camilla, it was a pleasure to meet you. You're a brave little girl, young lady, I should say. And I hope to have you around if I ever get in the same situation. But, you know, you're an asset to the community, and I think someday you might make a great nurse. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to congratulate you. That's a heck of a thing you did. That's tremendous. You're a hero, and thank you from the Town of Saugus. Thank you very much.
And Selectmen Vice Chair Chicalini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are so proud of you.
Thank you.
You are an amazing young lady, and I'm so excited to know that someone nine years old can be so composed, and you kept your cool, and you knew to call. You stayed on the phone. Those are things that are very hard to learn when you're only nine years old. So you're light years ahead of a lot of children out there, I can tell you that. Maybe even some adults. And so I'm very proud of you on behalf of the Town of Saugus. You are a hero, and I hope everybody recognizes that. Congratulations on an amazing job.
So Camilla, we have a citation to give you. It reads, "Town of Saugus Citation To All Persons Whom These Presents Shall Come. Be it known that the Town of Saugus sends its best wishes and deepest gratitude to Camilla Giron Gordado for her heroic actions during a time of emergency. Signed by the Saugus Board of Selectmen on November 21st, 2023." And it's signed by all five of us. So what I'd like to do now, I don't see the press here, but I would like to take a picture of the chief, and you, and your mom, and the board. If that's okay with you?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Andrew, I have a question. Because this is the... No, because I was asking to take a picture of everybody doing the flag. Yeah. Thank you.
No, I think they must have brought him here.
He brought him here, yeah.
Yeah, but they're not perfect.
No.
No, no, I think he changed the... Mike?
I dropped some more.
And secondly, Paul Castellari, our Veterans Agent, brought in these beautiful flags representing all of the military forces. So you see them displayed behind us. The next item on the agenda is Jake Dion Eagle Scout Ceremony. Jake is going to be, he just received his Eagle Scout, and I believe, was it December 3rd that we were invited?
Yes.
December 3rd. And we're very excited for Jake, and I look forward to attending his ceremony. If he comes later, I know he wanted to invite the board personally. Next, we have Ms. Gil Casarino, Regent, Parsons Robey Chapter, sponsorship of Reed's Across American Day. Is she here? Okay, let me read that into the racket. The important part of the letter is that on December 16th, it's Reed's Across America Day. And as the Regent of the Parsons Robey Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I cordially invite you and members of the Board of Selectmen to attend the ceremony. The ceremony will commence on Saturday, December 16th, at noon at the Riverside Cemetery, and we will be serving coffee and donuts at 11:30 AM. This is our third year organizing this very successful event honoring our fallen heroes, and we have greatly appreciated your participation and support each year. You'll be asked to say a few words at the ceremony. So we are invited on December 16th, and if somebody could please make a motion to add this...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the correspondence for the file, and any board members that can attend, to attend.
Thank you. That's seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Woods Conservation Restriction Request for Signatures. Hi. If you could please give your name and address for the racket?
Good evening. I'm Chris LaPointe. I'm Vice President of Conservation Operations at Essex County Greenbelt Association. And I'm here with Christine Berry, Land Protection Specialist with the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Thank you for time on the agenda this evening. We're here to discuss a conservation restriction over Lynn Woods. The Department of Conservation and Recreation in Essex County Greenbelt have been working for more than 10 years with the City of Lynn, Lynn Water and Sewer Commission, Friends of Lynn Woods, and others, to put a conservation restriction over all 2,200 acres of Lynn Woods, which of course is land in Lynn, Lynn Field, and Saugus. The purpose of the restriction is to ensure that that land is permanently protected for the uses that are currently enjoyed: water supply, public recreation, a golf course, all of the things that folks know and love about that area. The conservation restriction has been reviewed and approved and negotiated by all the parties. It's been approved for signature by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs for local signatures, the City of Lynn, Lynn Water and Sewer Commission, Greenbelt. Town of Lynn Field have all approved the restriction. And so we're here tonight to ask for your approval of the restriction. You may be aware that in the Commonwealth, all conservation restrictions must be approved by the local jurisdiction as being in the public interest. And so that's the reason that we're before you this evening, because a portion of that acreage is in Saugus. So again, the restriction will only cover the land owned by Lynn Field, by Lynn Water and Sewer Commission in Saugus. So no Saugus Conservation Commission land, and no other acreage. I would be happy to take any questions. I'm sure Christine would as well. Otherwise, we ask for your approval.
Well, I know that this has been a long process for you. And when you reached out a few months ago, I suggested go to the Conservation Commission. You got a unanimous vote in favor. And then I talked with our town manager at that time. He consulted with town council, who also approved. So it's gone through the appropriate channels before getting to us this evening. You are holding a map. Would you like to explain to us what you are holding?
Sure. So this map shows the entirety of Lynn Woods that will be protected under the Hutter Treaty Restriction. You'll see the vast majority of the property is in Lynn, and smaller portions are in Lynn Field, and Saugus town lines are shown.
Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena?
As a former chairman of the Conservation Commission and Open Space Committee, I want to thank you for your hard work in putting this all together. And open space is very important in everybody's life, and I want to thank you for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, we need a motion. There was a request for signature, so I'd like a motion...
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena?
I would like to make that motion that the board sign the covenant to keep Lynn Woods 2,200 acres as an open space for the protection and public recreational use. So I'll offer that as a motion.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Do you need us to sign something now?
It would be wonderful if you would be willing to, and I am a notary, so I could take care of notarizing.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We take a five-minute recess.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're back in session. The next item under correspondence is a stop sign request at Westland and Hurt Avenue, Town Meeting Member Len Ferrari. Mr. Ferrari, good evening.
Getting your steps in tonight.
We know who you are, but your name and address, please.
Len Ferrari, 22 Westridge Street, obviously Saugus. First of all, I want to say happy holidays to you guys, and congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
To you as well.
So I spoke to Lieutenant Connors, and I'm going to withdraw the request for the stop sign that we're both Town Meeting Members for our precinct, and we're going to work together to try to resolve, you know, the situation over there. And that's all I got.
Okay, so you'll be working with the police department to try to alleviate that issue?
Yeah, we're going to try to come up with some sort of solution, just to make it safe for the neighbors. And that's the biggest concern that, you know, that I got when I was walking around, talking to people, that speeding, people not stopping at the intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to work together and try to come up with a solution.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena?
I'll make a motion for that, for the file. Here's the letter.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have Citizens Comment, and we have Ms. Margaret O. Lanko, 5 Twin Springs Drive, regarding Hanson Road. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Can your name and...
Thank you for having me.
Your name and address for the file, please.
Yes. My name is Margaret O'Neil Lanko. I currently live in the house my parents bought in 1946, 17 Hanson Road. My mailing address is different. It's 5 Twin Springs Drive. So I've lived at this house off and on since the late '40s. And thank you for having me tonight and putting me on the agenda. I'm here tonight to make comments about the speed limit signs that are posted on Hanson Road. Hanson Road, if you're not familiar with it, is a very short street. It runs from Hamilton to Bisbee. It's less than two tenths of a mile. It's 20 feet wide, doesn't have sidewalks. It's an old street. It's not an engineered road, but it has two posted speed limit signs of 25 miles per hour. Again, it's 20 feet wide, no sidewalks. I'd like to compare these two 25 mile per hour signs on Hanson Road with, for example, Central Street having 15 mile per hour signs. Central Street is a major road. Central Street at Appleton, it starts with, as you're heading towards the ironworks, you've got a 20 mile per hour sign. Shortly thereafter, there are three 15 mile per hour signs located at Hargraves Court, Greystone Road, and Pleasant View Place. Coming in the opposite direction, leaving Saugus Center towards the ironworks, you've got a 20 mile per hour sign located across the street from St. John's Church. And then shortly after, you've got 15 mile per hour signs at Pleasant View Place, Greystone Road, and Hargraves Court. So Hanson Road's a minor street, 20 feet wide, no sidewalks. It has a blind curve at number five, an obstructed view hill in both directions at House number 31. Central Street, 32 feet wide with curbs and sidewalks on both sides. So I can't really find the logic in why 25 mile per hour signs were posted on Hanson Road. I do have, I've talked to the neighbors, and I do have in my possession a petition which I got many neighbors to sign. Some people weren't home. Some people are not feeling well. So I'm not sure what the next step is, but I'd like to, I think, and I don't know, you guys know what to do, but I think I'm supposed to have a public hearing about this. But you'll have to tell me because I don't really understand the process.
Madam Chairman? Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I was on the board, and I'm actually a neighbor. I live up on Hitching Hill.
I know you are.
So I travel that road often, and I know what you're talking about. So back in 2018, and Lieutenant Connors is here, back in 2018, and Madam Chair was chairman then, and I was vice chair, and I remember we met with the police department. The police department did a speed study. What they do is they run speed reports. And the lowest that you're supposed to bring the speed down to is within the 85th percentile of whatever the average speed is traveled on that road. That came out to approximately 30 miles an hour. We met with the police, and they agreed that we could bring it down to 25. I'm going to ask Lieutenant Connors that he come up because he can share additional information. But there's very specific criteria in order to go below the 85 percent, 85th percentile. When you want to go below that number, it's not an automatic. We can't just say, oh, we're going to make that 15 miles an hour. I wish it was that easy. There's specific requirements. So Lieutenant Connors, if you could come up, I'd like to get a better explanation.
And just so you know, we, back in 2018, when they, the one that Selectman Chicalini was talking about the letter, our Connors, who's going to come up in just a moment and speak, he did a lot of this work. So today, I called and I asked if he would come tonight to give you a better explanation because I'm very familiar with Hanson Road myself. I live like on the opposite end.
I know where you live.
You know where I live? Oh, boy.
We're both in trouble.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll relinquish for now, but I do have more comments.
Yep.
Sure. Lieutenant Connors, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Of course, anytime. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Just board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Better?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. You recall back in 2018, there was a town-wide study done on the speed limits?
Yep.
With respect to Central Street, that was one of the streets. The engineer told us that those, some of the signs had to be changed, and they were, and that the speed limits were appropriate. Now, a 15 mile an hour speed limit sign through an S curve doesn't seem to be inappropriate to me. Okay. But if you go to Hanson Road back in 2018, this board took a vote to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. That is as low as they can go, according to Mass. general law, and I have it with me if you'd like to see it, with respect to lowering a speed limit outside of a special speed zone. And those are only applicable, safety zones are only designated around parks, playgrounds, senior citizen housing areas, hospitals, and childcare centers. And then you can only go to 20 miles an hour. So I don't, I'm not unsympathetic to the neighbors that want to lower the speed limit. I just don't think the board has a legal right to do that. Now, town council may disagree with me, and he may have some other ideas about it, but Chapter 90 is pretty specific about what Mass. DOT will approve. The speed restrictions that you tried to impose some years ago, if you remember, there were already special speed regulations for major roads like Main Street and Upper Main Street, Essex Street. And that's why the state said you can't lower those.
Right.
That's why they came back to us and said, you can't do that. You did, the board did vote to lower the speed limit on Hanson Road to 25. I think that's as low as you're legally allowed to do. Like I said, I could be wrong. I will tell you that we could do selective enforcement up there. Historically, the last time we did it, we wrote zero tickets. We can, I can certainly have a car up there tomorrow morning, if the chief approves it, to run LiDAR. Traditionally, though, we get the neighbors. We get the people that live on that street. So I'm not unsympathetic to this. I just don't have the answer that you guys can take tonight to solve this. I just don't have it.
Lieutenant Connors, thank you very much. Is there any other ideas that you might have to, I mean, you can't really put speed bumps and things like that. A yield sign? Is there slow children? Is there something else that we can do?
The slow children signs aren't in the manual anymore, and there's specific reasons. They don't want kids to play in the street. We should not encourage our kids to play in the street, that kind of thing. And if you take a vote to put that sign, it could be construed as the board agreeing with it or suggesting it, and that we don't want to do that. I grew up playing street hockey in the street on Maple Street. I know that kids play in the street, but we're not supposed to, according to Uniform Manual for Traffic Control Devices, have kids playing in the street. It's not appropriate. Now, the sidewalk thing, way above my pay grade. How wide the street is, if it's a public way in Massachusetts, I know exactly what the speed limits are allowed to be. I think it is a public way, and I'm pretty confident in what I've given you tonight. But I, absolutely, I could be wrong.
Okay. Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Serena?
Just a quick question of Lieutenant Connors.
Sir.
So no matter what street it is, Lieutenant, we cannot lower the speed limit less than 25 miles an hour?
Unless it's a school.
Unless it's a special area.
Unless it's a school, then it's 20 miles an hour. I don't know about the 15 miles an hour speed limit signs. I'm not aware of that. But like I said, there was a town-wide traffic survey done, and Central Street was one of the ones that they did. And they came back to us and said, what was the appropriate speed limits to be set?
Based on the 85 percentile.
Yeah.
Yes. And that's, the 85th percentile simply means that's the speed at which, or close to at which, the speed limit should be set because 85 percent of the cars, or motorists, are traveling at that speed.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I wish I had better answers for you, but I just don't have the answer.
Any other questions from board members?
No, I'd be interested to hear what she...
Madam Chair? Selectman Riley?
Thank you. To Lieutenant Connors, before he sit down. I want to ask him a question. Lieutenant Connors?
She has a question.
Sorry.
Don't get too comfortable.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I thought you were... Excuse me.
I was just curious if the state, this is the state law that we have to go by.
It is.
So has there ever been in town that someone went up and tried to change the state law and then was successful, or is there a way to...
I'm not aware. There are a list of municipalities on the state's website that have lowered the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. For a lot of reasons, I don't think that's a good idea in Saugus. There's too, there's already too much traffic. Lowering the speed limit won't make it safer. Lowering the speed limit won't make it safer. You're still going to have the same amount of cars, and you're not necessarily going to have people, people are going to drive at the 85th percentile, which is what they think is the safe way to do it.
Okay.
All right? But the statutes are pretty clear, and that's why the state came back to you. When you tried to lower it to 25, there were already special speed restrictions on a number of streets that were adopted in, some of them in the 60s, that had higher speed limits.
Yeah, just to kind of, Madam Chairman, for you, just to add to that. So the difference is, because everybody sort of, I think we dealt with this some time ago, and we did a study, but so that people, I guess, get an understanding is, Saugus probably different than other communities back, you know, whatever it was in the 60s. The Board of Selectmen elected to use their authority under a different statute and set speed limits on numerous streets throughout the whole community. And once they do that, we're now under that statute. So like Melrose, that he's giving an example of, they're under a different statute because they didn't do that years ago. So they were able to do a 25 mile an hour townwide, other than, you know, special restrictions. And that's why the town, we're not allowed, we're not able to do that because we're under a different statute that regulates speed limits. And when you do that, you have to do an engineered study in the 85 percentile to change that, and that is never going to be the speed limit. We've tried this a couple of times over the years that I've been here. But that's the, I think, the core of what people, I think, are struggling to understand. We adopted and worked under a different statute that has different regulations in regulating and changing speed limits under the Board of Selectmen than other communities have, are under. And that's the difference. Just so more clarification on that.
Could it, Madam Chairman, just to the manager, could it be, Scott, that...
What's that?
Could it be because our town charter says the Board of Selectmen are the traffic commissioners? Is that why?
I think it's, you know, I don't think it's necessarily that. I think what it is, is whatever happened back in the 60s, the Selectmen chose to take that role.
Their actions triggered the statute.
Right, and they triggered that they are in charge of regulating it under this particular statute. And then there's another statute that if the Selectmen didn't do that as traffic commissioners, so it's similar, you know, to that, but then it's under a different regulation and a different statute that has different mechanisms of how to change the speed limits. And that was like a big confusion when we did a traffic study years ago, and Lieutenant Conners is correct, we went and actually found all kinds of speed signs that were posted that were inaccurate, were never approved, and we went through and put a lot more speed signs out, as well as taking the ones down that weren't the correct speed limit, and made those changes so it's more uniform to what was actually approved and what regulations are on each of the streets in Saugus. So we made some changes, I think there was different areas, and then we were allowed to make changes, I believe, on Central Street and a couple other streets to make it more uniform, so it didn't go from 35 to 25, then back up to 35, or whatever it was that was put in place years ago. So we tried to make it more uniform, to make it safer, and we did make those changes, but we weren't able, at that time, there was a group that was asking to try to copy what Melrose did to make everything 25 miles an hour in the whole town, and we weren't, after we had the traffic engineers, we, you know, put that whole study together. We implemented a lot of the traffic calming, that's the words they use, you know, sort of initiatives, and we did a lot of that with bump outs and different things, but like as Lieutenant Conners is talking about, the more you do that, you actually increase, start putting traffic lights up and different things, then it creates more traffic and more congestion. So there's a sort of a balance of trying to figure that out. But the speed limit itself, we're under a different regulation, and the requirements to try to change that are nearly impossible because you have to do an engineered study, and then, you know, we already have, we do preliminary with the police, and they all don't fall into that 85 percentile, so then you can't make the change. You actually might have to go up in speed.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So let me ask you this. Are there any laws that say we cannot remove the 25 mile per hour signs? Do you know how fast you go when you take Hanson Road to go home?
When I come off of Chicalini? When I come off of...
When you come off Hamilton.
Hamilton Street?
Check it.
Probably 25, 30 miles an hour.
Okay. Children are not playing in the street. I'm walking my dog. My neighbor is going out for his mail. They come so fast. I tried doing 25 miles per hour the other day. I had a passenger, I scared him. It's hard to do 25 miles an hour. I would love to have you do 25 miles per hour, Mr. Chicalini, and then I would like to have the members of the board be pedestrians on that road and see how you feel. I don't see why we even have a sign posted. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
There's plenty of streets in Saugus that have no signs posted, and you can't do 25.
Lieutenant Conners?
Okay. So if you, remember, the speed limit on that street used to be 30 miles an hour. The board lowered it to 25.
Right.
If you take the sign down, what is the default speed limit in Massachusetts?
30.
It's 30 miles an hour.
That's right.
So if you take the sign down, you're actually going to increase what the posted speed limit is.
That's right.
Does this make sense?
Yeah.
I'm just telling you what Chapter 90 says.
I do want to remind you, this is not, this isn't a public hearing, so we're really not supposed to have dialogue. This is Citizens' Comments.
Right.
Just to add to that, the 30 miles an hour then becomes, the 25 becomes unenforceable because you don't have a poster.
Yeah.
So...
So...
No, no, it's fine.
So, yeah, thank you. So like I said, we did invite Lieutenant Conners because we knew that you have some questions tonight. We were trying to answer your questions. Typically, under Citizens' Comments, we listen to the applicant, what the petitioner has to say, the resident has to say, but we don't have a back and forth. And we've allowed this to continue because we are, we are empathetic. Again, I've walked Hanson Road, I've walked up and down, I understand what the implications are and what your concerns are, and perhaps, you know, Lieutenant Conners can think, you know, go back, think if there's something else that we can do to try to alleviate the situation, but I do realize that it is an issue.
Okay, thank you for listening to me. I guess we won't be having a public hearing then, there's no other step in the process.
Right. I mean, if we had a public hearing, we wouldn't, we have two options. We would remove the signs where then it becomes a 30 mile an hour speed zone, enforceable at 30, not 25. And then, or we have a public hearing just to hear people talk about pros and cons, but we can't act on it because we're already at, we're already below the 85th percentile as far as the speed on that street. You know it because you said, you see the cars, the way they go by, and the speed that they're going on. Unfortunately, that's how the rating for the town, that's how they rate what the speed on the street needs to be. So I don't think the public hearing could result in anything other than raising the speed limit, not lowering it.
What we can do, Madam Chairman, through you, is I think what Lieutenant Conners suggested is we can have the chief direct, you know, random and selective enforcement with, you know, having cruisers go up there, units, and do some radar and/or make a presence up there randomly.
Just a point, though. I don't think what she's saying is 25, it's not that you're thinking people are even going faster than 25, it's that 25 is too fast for that street. So even if the, I don't think we're going to write a lot of tickets. We didn't give any tickets out last time. I know I don't really go above 25, but 25 is, what she's saying is, 25 is a lot for a 20-foot-wide street with no sidewalks. I get that.
There was a collision at the corner of Hanson and Bisbee within the past year.
Yeah. See, where I see the speed is where people, when you come off of Hamilton, and you come in...
It's like an off-ramp from a highway because they're doing 30, 35 off Hamilton.
If you're driving west on Hamilton.
Especially, yeah, especially if they're driving west, exactly.
It's like that big curve, so...
Exactly.
You know, I wish there was more that we could do, but I will defer to the police department. If you want to talk with Chief Riccadelli, I'd make that even in the form of a motion that we ask the chief if we can do some selective enforcement out there. Even the appearance of a police cruiser could slow vehicles down inherently because police cars there.
Well, I would appreciate that.
Do you think a speed sign, one of those flashing speed signs would help at all? You're going too fast?
I don't think, yeah, but it's not, because the 25 is the speed limit, but the 25 in perception is too fast.
And I totally agree with you, but I'm thinking that if they did see the sign, at least, they might say, oh, I'm going 28, maybe I should slow it down a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think of alternatives.
Yeah, we'll defer, you know, you could take a peek at it. I think that would be your expert tutelage.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak?
Yes. Everybody knows where I am anyway, but Everett Malley from Main Street in Saugus. This sounds good with the speed.
Can you please speak in?
Can you lift the microphone up?
Yes, we can hear you.
I live on Main Street, right next to the high school. Here's my complaint. I challenge, and I've, and Mr. Cogliano showed up one morning, I challenge all the rest of you, the four years to be at the high school entrance on Main Street at quarter after 7:00 in the morning and see what happens there. Now, before I even start, for the police department, I have to praise them. These guys show up and they do a job that nobody else would want. You've got traffic coming out of the high school, you've got traffic coming over the bridge, and they're trying to direct all this traffic. You know what the big thing they, the big problem you have? Nobody directs the kids. You want to know who walks the kids across the street? I do, in the morning. And Mr. Cogliano was there to watch it. I walk right out in the middle of the street to stop the traffic because the police, yes, they stop it and they do a great job, but you need more than a cop at the end of the high school because you've got the people, you've got the people on the other side that off of Vine, off of, yeah, Vine Street, when the cars come into the high school, they're trying to dump them out, but nobody watches the kids. The morning you were there, you saw that the girl almost got run over by a cop because the cop stopped the car here, and what happens? She got out of a car and backed him inside, and luckily, she didn't get hit. I'm just giving you something to think about.
If I could just add something, Mr. Malley.
Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Selectman, Chairman Panetta. I spoke with Chairman Vinnie Serino from the school committee, and they have advertised for a crossing guard.
They do.
They advertise a position, add another one.
Yeah, because you need more than a cop there. Now, my big question, and I'll go into you with the pocket, I don't understand why other towns, and you can go into Melrose, go up by the old Jiffy Mountain, go up that way, you can go into Malden, and they all have wide speed bumps to slow the traffic down. Why can other towns do it, but Saugus can't? I mean, and you're suggesting putting up a blinking light. Where I live, I can see the, I can see the speed light right down on Main Street. I've seen them going 80 miles an hour, and they stop and they race from the high school, that's a quarter mile right down to where the speed limit is.
Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chairman, thank you. So one of the things, we have a letter on a separate, the previous speaker's comment, one of the reasons, or a couple of the reasons why they got away from the speed bumps, and they get, a lot of communities are getting away from them, including Everett, because A, snowplowing, you can't, it destroys the plow trucks, the temporary. B, the noise factor. Neighbors are complaining when the trucks hit the bumps, the noise from the bang on the bumps. So what some communities are doing is the raised crosswalks, the actual street.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, but it's a full length.
But it's actually the street itself.
Yeah.
So the plows can go up and over it, it's gradual, but it's so significant that it does, you do have to stop or you'll jump, you'll end up jumping.
Yeah, otherwise you'll destroy your car.
Right, right.
But I'm just saying, in seriousness, I'm not here to start a...
No, but a lot of people, I just wanted to get that out there, a lot of people have made that comment, like, why can't we just throw down the speed bumps or whatever? It's not a real, true solution because you, as a person on Main Street, it might help you and get some people to go slower, but when you're dealing with the noise aggravation, and then the plow trucks are hitting them and smashing them, and they're going onto the side, it's not going to, it's not going to accomplish what we're really trying to do, which is slow people down on a regular basis.
Well, especially at a school. I mean, you go down, you go down Adams Ave, and I'm assuming all you guys have been down Adams Ave.
Yep.
You go down Adams Ave, what do you see in the middle of the street going down to the school? Schools out, school zones slow down. What do you see on Main Street? Absolutely nothing. You don't see anything that lets anybody know it's a school zone. Absolutely nothing. And then in the morning, like I said, I take the bus in the morning right across the street. I get over there about quarter after 7:00. And like I said, I don't blame the police at all because they, you know, I've got the norm from going over there. And they, they're just caught, they're caught in the middle because the people over the other side of Vine Street are screaming because they want the cars out of there, the people want to get out of there, and they can't watch that and watch the kids. So like you said, and you brought it up earlier, you have to have somebody there to help them. And I'm not saying a couple of police officers or anything else, to hire somebody. But like I said, I challenge each one of you. You've been there?
I've been there.
I've been there as, I think we've all been there.
It is a disaster.
So I'm not sure if you've gone to the school committee or not, but Selectman Cogliano did say he spoke with Select, I'm sorry, school committee chair, Vinnie Serino, they're looking to get a crossing guard there, and I think that will help alleviate some of the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I can give Vinnie a call, I know him anyway, but I mean, it's, like I said, I was planning on coming down last week, but I got tied up. But I mean, I think someone should say something because, and you were right, those signs that you put up for speed, that's a joke. That really is. You know, tell you how fast you're going. Go to Main Street by the high school at about 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, and I'll guarantee they're doing 60 miles an hour down the street. No problems whatsoever. And I could tell you 100 accidents down by my house because, you know, as you know, one one night went into the thing and everything else, so that's all I have to say. I just...
Thank you.
We heard you. Thank you, Mr. Malley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume there's no one else for public comment? Okay, very good. We do have two continued hearings. We have Gil Oil Company, 344 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. And I want to mention that the five Board of Selectmen, along with the business owner, as well as the two applicants, Gil Oil, Mass Junk, as well as residents, met this morning at 8 o'clock for a site review, and we need a little bit more information. We're looking for a certified plot plan of that particular parcel, and we do have some Town Council follow-up. So with that said, with Gil Oil Company, 344 Central Street, would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I will make the motion that we continue the hearing on Gil Oil Company, 344 Central Street, Saugus, Mass, to our next scheduled meeting.
And the chair will second. I don't see anybody in the audience here to speak on it, so I feel comfortable just doing this.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry?
Just one thing for public knowledge. The both building inspectors and the conservation officer was also present at the site visit this morning.
Yes, they were, and I thank, I thank both of the inspectional service department, as well as Frank McKinnon, Conservation. That was great. We had a really good attendance this morning. So we have a motion on the floor. It was seconded. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we had a continued hearing on Mass Junk, 344 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. Selectman Chicalini?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we continue at the request of the applicant, Mass Junk, 344 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. Continue that to our next scheduled meeting.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is under new business, and we have the license renewals for the 2024 year. And although not all of the licenses have come in, we are going to make a motion for these, all of these licenses this evening, with a, with a couple of exceptions, but they all have to get all their paperwork and applications into the Board of Selectmen's office, as well as all their fees into the Treasurer Collector's Office no later than December 31st, 2023, or they're not renewed. So, with that said, Selectman Riley.
Selectman Riley?
I'm sorry, Selectman Serino.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll make a motion that the Board approve all the 2024 all-alcoholic common victories license with the same terms and conditions. All fees submitted to the Treasurer's Office, and the application must be entered to the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31st. 110 Grill, 855 Broadway with an entertainment license. 99 Restaurant, 181 Broadway with an entertainment license. Applebee's, 214 Broadway with an entertainment license. Border Cafe, 356 Broadway with an entertainment license. Buffalo Wild Wings, 180 Broadway with an entertainment license. Casse Balatare, 114 Broadway with an entertainment license. The Continental, 266 Broadway with an entertainment license. Fudd Ruckers, 910 Broadway with an entertainment license. Hammer Smith, 330 Central Street with extended hours of operation. Hooters, 1143 Broadway with an entertainment license. Jimmy's, 114 Broadway with an entertainment license. K Pub, 22 Lincoln Ave with an entertainment license. Kyle Moon, 948 Broadway with an entertainment license. Polk Aris, 92 Broadway with an entertainment license. Prince, 517 Broadway with an entertainment license. The Push Cart, 331 Main Street with an entertainment license. Route 1 Grill House, 817 Broadway with an entertainment license. Maddie's, 1639 Broadway with an entertainment license. Shoy's, 124 Broadway with an entertainment license. Tokyo Steakhouse, 1201 Broadway with an entertainment license.
Rosaria's?
Rosaria's, 190 Main Street with an entertainment license. That's my motion.
Thank you, and that is seconded by the Chair. So, this is for the 2024 all-alcoholic common victories licenses with either an entertainment or extended hours. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serino.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2024 Baron Wine Inc. Corgiyl Common Victors license with the same terms and conditions, and all fees must be submitted to the Treasurer's Office and the application into the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31st. King Crab, 44 Broadway, entertainment license. K-Town, 910 Broadway, entertainment license. Paolo's, 304 Broadway with a common victors license.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make a note that I'm going to abstain from Paolo's license because of the landlord.
Okay, so do you want to do? Selectman Serino, can we pull Paolo's out of there and we'll do?
He can just abstain.
Oh, he can abstain, you can abstain from all of them then? Or do you want to vote on the two and we'll do a separate motion for Paolo's?
Just separate for Paolo's, yeah.
Okay, so, so if it's okay with you, Selectman Serino, we'll just do King Crab and K-Town barbecue?
Yes.
For now? Okay. And that is seconded by the Chair for the 2024 Baron Wine Corgiyls Common Victual License and Entertainment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serino.
And I'd like to make, let me make the same motion, 304 Broadway, Paolo's?
For Paolo's, please, yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to approve the 2024 Baron Wine and Corgiyl Common Victors license, same terms and conditions, fees and application into the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31st for Paolo's, 304 Broadway, for a common victors license.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, one other comment, Paolo's is 304 Lincoln Ave.
304 Lincoln Ave, okay, so we'll make that?
Change that to Lincoln Ave.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, we're, we're making the change. I'm seconding the change. We'll have another motion for Paolo's, for 304 Lincoln Ave. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. And?
Madam Chairman?
Wait, wait, one second. Janice, you got that right, that change?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Selectman Serino, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2024 all-alcohol common victories club license for American Legion, 44 Taylor Street for an entertainment license. All, all, all have the same terms and conditions, and fees and application must be submitted to the Board by December 31st. The Elks, 401 Main Street, entertainment license. Fox Hill Yard Club, 114 Ballard Street, entertainment license. ITM, 1 Beachview Ave, entertainment license. Knights of Columbus, 57 Appleton Street, entertainment license. Melrose Fishing Game, Reachieve Avenue, entertainment license. BFW, 190 Main Street, entertainment license. And Madam Chairman, I'm going to abstain from the ITM vote. I was a co-founder of the Italian-American Club, although I don't serve as an officer, my brother serves as president, so I'm going to abstain.
Oh, so you want to pull, would you like to pull that one out?
No, we can, I'll just abstain on the ITM, we can vote on the rest of them.
All right, so.
Just note my abstention on the ITM.
Oh, okay.
Not good enough, instead of reading it over.
Okay. So, the Chair will second the 2024 all-alcoholic common victuals club licenses and entertainment. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, with the one abstention for the Italian-American Club. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2024 all-alcohol package store licenses with the same terms and conditions, all fees submitted into the Treasurer's Office, and all the applications submitted into the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31st. Bar Mado's Liquor, 339 Broadway. Bosses, 216 Broadway with an entertainment license. Clifton Dale, 7 Essex Street. Guys, 7 Main Street. Nasty Narnies, 325 Main Street. North Shore Liquors, 180 Main Street.
And the Chair will second the 2024 all-alcoholic package store licenses, one with entertainment. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serino.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2024 Baron Wine Package Store license with the same terms and conditions, all fees submitted to Treasurer's Office and the application to the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31st. Joe's, 304 Lincoln Ave. Cristo's, 465 Essex Street. Lees's, 4A Howard Street. Pachi's, 190 Main Street.
And the Chair will second the 2024 Baron Wine Package Stores. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I just have to abstain from Joe's, but you could just, just one abstention on that.
Okay, one abstention, so, so it's unanimous for Cristo's, Lees's, and Pachi's with one abstention for Joe's.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got that, Janice, right? Next, we have Selectman Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, this is to approve the 2024 Class 1 Auto Dealers License, meaning the same terms and conditions, and to have all fees submitted into the Treasurer Collection Office, and all paperwork and applications must be into the Board of Selectmen before 12:31:23. McGovern Ford, 1481 Broadway.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Riley.
To approve the 2024 Class 2 Auto Dealers Licenses, meaning the same terms and conditions, all fees are to be submitted into the Treasurer Collection Office, and all paperwork and applications must be into the Board of Selectmen before 12:31:23. 24 Winter Street LLC, 24 Winter Street. ASAAM Inc., 19 Salem Turnpike. Auto Excellence, 173 Main Street. Auto House USA, 1134 Broadway. Ballard Street Auto, 119 Ballard Street. C&amp;P Imports, 110 Bennett Highway. Casella Auto, 56 Denver Street. Chapman Auto Body, 16 Rare, Hamilton Street. Colonial Auto Sales, 1753 Broadway. Melrose Auto Body, 177 Central Street. Nicoli Auto Body, 819 Broadway. Ken's Car Care Center, 128 Ballard Street. King Motor Cars, 160 Broadway. Polo Gas, 50 Hamilton Street. Saugus Auto Mall, 136 Broadway. Saugus Auto Repair, excuse me, 74 Hamilton Street. Saugus Auto Sales, 233 Hamilton Street. TJ's Auto, 124 Ballard Street. U-Haul, 66 Broadway.
And the Chair will second the 2024 Class 2 Auto Dealers Licenses. There further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Riley.
To approve the 2024 Limo Licenses, meaning same terms and conditions, submitted all fees into the Treasurer and Collections Office, and all paperwork and applications must be into the Board of Selectmen before 12:31:23. Naughty Limousine, 319 Lincoln Avenue, 1 limo. Express World, 1 Pennybrook Garden, 1 limo.
The Chair seconds that motion. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Selectman Riley.
To approve the 2024 Class 3 Auto Dealers Licenses, meaning same terms and conditions, submitting all fees into the Treasurer Collection Office, and all paperwork and application into the Board of Selectmen before 12:31:23. ASAAM LLC, 19 Salem Turnpike. Nicoli Auto Body, 819 Broadway.
And the Chair seconds the 2024 Class 3 Auto Dealers Licenses. There further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Next, we have the 2024 Common Victors Licenses with Extended Hours. 711, 32 Hamilton Street, Common Victors License and Extended Hours. 711, 386 Lincoln Ave, Common Victors License, Extended Hours. Alltown, 1123 Broadway, Common Victors with Extended Hours. Avante Foro Leno, 1268 Broadway, Common Victors. Angelo's Roast Beef, 343 Main Street, Common Victors and Entertainment. Bachi's, 4A Howard Street, Common Victors. Banana Splits, 522 Lincoln Ave, Common Victors and Entertainment. Bara Grazza, Italiano, 184 Broadway, Common Victors and Entertainment. Bits and Bytes, 488 Lincoln Ave, Common Victors. Burger King, 1449 Broadway, Common Victors. Bubble Tea, 1202 Broadway, Unit 117, Common Victors. CBS, 1075 Broadway, Extended Hours. Chipotle, 444 Broadway, Common Victors. Clifton Dale Santos, 2 Essex Street, Extended Hours. Crumble Cookie, 358 Broadway, Common Victors. Dave's Hot Chicken, 890 Broadway, Common Victors. Dragon Island, 44 Hamilton Street, Common Victors. Dumpling Garden, 466 Essex Street, Unit E, Common Victors. Dunkin' Donuts, 335 Lincoln Ave, Common Victors. Dunkin', 42 Hamilton Street, Common Victors and Entertainment. Dunkin', 86 Broadway, Common Victors Entertainment. Dunkin', 339 Main Street, Common Victors Entertainment. Dunkin', 1204 Broadway, Common Victors. Dunkin', 1539 Broadway, Common Victors Extended Hours. Esposito Bakery, 323 Main Street, Common Victors. Familia, 1268 Broadway, Common Victors. Five Guys, 180 Main Street, Common Victors. Giovanni's, 194 Broadway, Common Victors. GLS Associates, 935 Broadway, Skating Rink. Goodfellas, 240 Lincoln Ave, Common Victors. Hometown Pizza, 23 Essex Street, Common Victors. Hong Kong Express, 461 Lincoln Ave, Common Victor. Honey Baked Ham, 405 Broadway, Common Victors. IHOP, 114 Broadway, Common Victors. J&amp;M, 304 Central Street, Entertainment. Jay Pachi, 190 Main Street, Common Victors. Jersey Mike's, 17, 114 Broadway, Common Victors. All paperwork submitted to the Board of Selectmen by December 31st, and all fees paid to the Collector of Treasurer's Office.
Thank you, and that's seconded by the Chair. Just one quick question. Esposito's Bakery went out of business, but there's going to be a new bakery going in there. Do we want to include it anyway?[1547.66]
I didn't hear you, Deb. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Esposito's Bakery went out of business, but they're on the list?
Doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I would leave them, and then they can, when the new bakery comes in, they can submit their paperwork and we'll prove them separately.
Sounds good, okay. So this is seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Selectman Cogliano's. Selectman Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Continuation of the 2024 Carmen Vickers Licenses Extended Hours. Kane's, 120 Lincoln Avenue, Carmen Vickers. Kane's, 1575 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Kelly's, 595 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Kentucky Fried Chicken, 421 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Wendy's Deli, 653 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Los Romitos, 323 Main Street, Carmen Vickers. Maro Burgers, 123 Main Street, Carmen Vickers. McDonald's, 127 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. McDonald's, 738 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Mike's Place, 237 Hamilton Street, Carmen Vickers. Nick's Place, 306 Central Street, Carmen Vickers and Entertainment. Mickey's Pizza Time, 361 Lincoln Ave., Carmen Vickers. Orange Leaf, 124 Broadway, Carmen Vickers and Entertainment. Original Giovanni's, 194 Broadway, Carmen Vickers Entertainment. Papagino's, 385 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Panera Bread, 647 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Peters Pizza, 48 Hamilton Street, Carmen Vickers. Punjab Konsari Inc., 1268 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Richdell's, 304 Lincoln Ave., Carmen Vickers Entertainment. Roller World, 425 Broadway, 425 RARE Broadway, Carmen Vickers Entertainment. Saugus Center Convenience, 307 Central Street, Carmen Vickers and Extended Hours. Salsa Sicily Eatery, 305 Lincoln Ave., Carmen Vickers. Speedway, 2400 Broadway, Carmen Vickers Extended Hours. Speedway, 1535 Broadway, Carmen Vickers Extended Hours. Stella's Pizza, 465 Essex Street, Carmen Vickers. Starbucks, 855 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Starbucks, 366B Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Sox, 67 Lindfels Parkway, Carmen Vickers. Venda Seasonal, Sox, oh, sorry, Square One Mall, 1201 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Target, 400 Lindfels Parkway, Carmen Vickers. Trader Joe's, 358 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Tropical Smoothies, 352 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Victor's, 560 Lincoln Ave., Carmen Vickers. Walgreens, 1228 Broadway, Entertainment. Wendy's, 777 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Wingstop, 352 Broadway, Carmen Vickers. Yaya's Juice and Smoothies, 306 Central Street, Carmen Vickers.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further?
Madam Chair, sorry. Same terms and conditions, all fees paid to the Treasurer's Collector's Office and all applications and documentation to the Board of Selectmen by December 31/23.
Thank you. And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have to abstain from Richdell's, 304 Lincoln Ave., Carmen Vickers Entertainment.
Okay. Thank you. So all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and one abstention for Richdell's. Very good.
Oh, thank you. So Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the following 2024 Valuable Used Goods Licenses. Same terms and conditions, all fees paid to the Treasurer Collector's Office and all applications and documents to the Board of Selectmen by December 31/2023 for the following valuable used good licenses. GCA Jewellers, 451 Lincoln Ave. J&amp;S Jewelry, 406 Lincoln Ave. ASA Jewellers, 1277 Broadway. Sassoon Jewellers, 348 Central Street. And K Jewellers, 1201 Broadway.
And the Chair seconds the 2024 Valuable Used Goods Licenses. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Although, it passes Janice Wright. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Last one. Same term, so the following 2024 miscellaneous licenses with the same terms and conditions, all fees to be paid by the Treasurer, to the Treasurer Collector's Office and all applications and documentation to the Board of Selectmen's Office by December 31/2023. 2024 miscellaneous licenses as follows. Tina, Jace, 624 Broadway, Fortune Talent. LA Fitness, 1450 Broadway, Entertainment. JAB Services, DBA, Amira Lounge, 184 Broadway, Wine and Mall.
And that's seconded by the Chair for these 2024 miscellaneous licenses. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. I want to thank you all. I know that's a lot of work, so thank each and every one of you. And thank you, Janice, for putting the list together. Next on the agenda, we have appointments. We have Mr. Thomas Dion Jr. for appointment to the Saugus Public Library Board of Trustees. I think we all know Mr. Dion, and he did submit his resume. This is a three-year term if, if, to be on the Saugus Public Library Board, and we can't go over three years, so that would mean that it would, his term would end 3/31/2026.
Three, 3/31?
What did I say?
Or 12/31.
Oh, March 31st.
March 31st.
Yeah, March 31st.
I'll offer that motion.
Yeah.
There's a motion? And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero, and thank you to Mr. Dion for applying. Congratulations. Next, we do have a, on the agenda, we do have somebody who was interested in the Saugus Cable TV Commission. I'm going to ask at this point for a motion to table. Would somebody like to make?
So moved.
Thank you. And Chair seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Where is that Town Manager?
Come back here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep, 3 minutes and 25 seconds.
That's it, okay. I only, I only have one thing, I think, honestly, is to remind everybody about the upcoming tree lighting. So the tree lighting is going to be, the annual tree lighting is going to be Friday, December 1st this year, and it's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So we hope everybody comes out. We're going to have a visit from Santa, all the traditional stuff with horse sleigh, sleigh rides, horse drawn sleigh rides and wagons, bouncy houses, all the good stuff that people enjoy in the families. We usually have a really good crowd, and we'll have to see what the weather in the store, but want to make sure we get that out there. We're going to put some information out to the papers the next day or two and on cable, try to reach as many people as we can. And then what the Board will have to also, I don't know, we can talk offline, but schedule a time for the menorah, if, you know, do that. This, this probably, I don't know. What did we do it last year? Do you remember what the date was?
I think we got it the second day, right?
It was the second day of Hanukkah. Is there a certain day you're supposed to do it on?
I don't know if it's supposed to be the first day if we can.
It's December 7th is the first day.
Okay, so.
So I would think you would, would want to do it December 7th if we could.
Okay, sure. So we'll, we'll figure that out, and we can talk offline on that as well. So that was a great bringing that we brought in last year, and continue to do that. So that's all I have, but that's, I guess we're all getting ready up for Thanksgiving, so I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully people will enjoy their family and take a little bit of time off.
Thank you, and same to you. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. Do board members have any questions for the Town Manager this evening?
No.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Riley.
Through you to the Town Manager. Good evening.
Good evening.
I was just curious, on, on Mr. Dion's letter to join the Library Board of Trustees, he said, "I have previously served on the Saugus Historical, yeah, Historical Commission." Is he still on it? Is that past tense, or are they looking for another?
No, I believe he's still, he's still on.
Okay, it just sounded like it served, and I just didn't know if that, he had left.
I didn't see the letter, but yeah, I, yeah, he still serves on the Historical Commission.
I thought he was. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This, this question goes out to the Town Manager and any of the board members. Have you heard anything about, usually December 1st, we'll have the tree lighting, which is a great event, and then the next day, the schools typically have some sort of a stroll. It's a big fundraiser for them. Have you heard anything?
I haven't.
Yeah?
So I, I haven't, but Madam Chairman, I, I believe that they usually have a set date, and I think it, it usually coincides with the tree lighting. Tree lighting's a little early this year. I think that we usually make a judgment call when the Friday ends up being the, the 1st, and sometimes it gets pushed to the 7th, you know, the, or 8th the following week. So I haven't heard anything about the schools, but we can, I, I think they do a different type of setup anyway, where they're only doing it at one school now, or two schools. Is that how they did it last year?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so, because obviously we consolidated all the schools. But I haven't heard anything. We can try to look into it to find out. I'm sure they're going to want to get the word out, but I have not heard that it's the next day.
Okay, thank you.
I know we used to have, what, the, the tree at the Meg, but then I think we've adjusted the date, date for that, did it earlier, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It's giving funny moments.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. We have the October 10th, 2023 Minutes.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Minutes of October 10th, 2023.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have the October 24th, 2023 Minutes.
Please, yes.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Minutes of October 24th, 2023.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Lastly, we have members' motions, and we'll start off with Selectman Riley, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So first, I'd like to congratulate the Saugus U8 and U12 Cheerleaders moving on to the national competitions in Florida. I wish them the best of luck and have a wonderful time. And I also want to thank all the volunteers and their time and talents to make that possible, for the girls to do that, and again, wish them, wish them well down there. The Saugus Lions will be holding a drive-by drop-off toy drive this Saturday, November 25th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Senior Center, 466 Central Street. Please drop off an unwrapped toy. Retired Captain Bill O'Malley and the Saugus Fire Department will be delivering these toys to childrens or families in need. Best of luck to the Saugus Satyums playing the PBD Tanners on Thanksgiving Day. Hope they win. I'd like to wish Deb, Jeff, Mike, Anthony, Scott, and Janice and your families a happy Thanksgiving, and to everyone here and everyone watching at home, again, have a wonderful, relaxing holiday. That's it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
You can call me, you can call me whatever you want.
Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just like to wish the public a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank my board members, Town Manager Scott Crabfee, Janice Scott Clerk. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Select, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Sereno.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I know we all went to the Veterans Day Ceremony at Veterans Park, and I want to thank the Veterans Council and the, especially Executive Officer Robert O'Toole. He's a retired U.S. Air Force, and he gave quite an inspirational speech regarding William Crawford. He was a World War II veteran, Army veteran, who single-handedly destroyed three enemy machine gun nests in World War II. It was very inspirational, and I want to thank everybody involved in setting that ceremony up. Mr. Manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We have, Monday's the last leaf, leaf day pickup, Monday, the 27th, and trash pickup's delayed one day. If I don't say this, I know I'm going to get asked questions. Neighbors on the street, oh, whoever.
That is correct, and what I would help sort of emphasize through you, Madam Chairman, is that every holiday, and there's a calendar online, every holiday, there's a delay of one day on trash. So if you rule a thumb, if it's a holiday and you're off of work and you don't have to go to work, then there's not going to be a trash pickup, and there's a calendar online.
So Friday's pickup is Saturday.
Correct.
And Thursday's is Friday.
Then Thursday's is Friday.
Okay.
And then the, the leaf pickup is, I think we did actually put out a, a press release on the reminder for the leaf pickup. It's the last week, and there's lots of leaves that are on the ground, and there'll be lots of leaves coming this weekend. We got a lot of wind coming in the next couple days. It's going to be pretty rain.
I know you.
No snow, though. No snow.
You'll be busy, right?
What's that?
You'll be busy picking up leaves, right?
Correct. Branches and, and tree limbs.
And finally, I want to wish everybody on the board, Scott and your family, Janice and your family, a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you, and good luck to the football team. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Sereno. And Selectman Vice Chairman, Jeff Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many things said, so not to replicate, I definitely, it was, it was nice to, in addition to the events already named, the Pancake Breakfast coming back into play was awesome. It was so nice to have that tradition. It brought back memories when my son was playing, and it's always nice. Kevin Andrews is a true gem in this community. Doesn't get enough recognition for all the stuff that he does and how the Andrews family as a whole gets involved. They've been involved in the past with the haunted houses and everything else that, around town, and just a fantastic job with his toy drive as well. I want to thank Len. He sent me along. One of, one of your questions was about a stroll. The first one that I have information on, the stroll, holiday stroll is 10:00 a.m. at Belmonte Steam Academy in the gymnasium on Saturday, the 2nd. So that's the stroll. Thank you, Len, for sending that along. I wanted to announce, I had some information on Jake Dion. He apologized. Couldn't make it here tonight because he's at a practice ceremony for his Eagle Scout, so the Court of, Court of Honor, Court of Honor, Sunday, December 3rd, Saugus Elks, 1:00 p.m., 401 Main Street. And obviously, we're really proud of Jake and love to see a great amount of support for him there. And also, we also went to the Veterans Day event that was put on at the schools at the Belmonte, and that was pretty, pretty incredible.
It was great.
Watching those kids get so involved and so animated, and seeing so many of our veterans that have served, you know, and live in Saugus. It was truly an honor. And last but not least, Mr. Manager, I do want to pass through thank you. Had probably more calls with you in the last few weeks than you, than you'd hoped, but the guys continue to do an amazing job and just pass along the thank yous. The residents appreciate it. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, all my fellow board members, your families, Mr. Manager, Janice, Art, Len, Andrew, Maureen, Frank, the whole crew. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a, have a safe.
Jimmy just went into the men's room.
Oh, and Jimmy.
All right, that's back there. Don't forget it.
So have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini. I also want to say good luck to our football team, our Saugus Satyums, on Thanksgiving. I want to congratulate Mrs. Essex County. This year, she's from Saugus, Laurie Burke. I want to also congratulate the U8 and U12 Cheerleaders. The U8, they're the New England Champions, and U12 came in third. So both of these teams are heading to nationals, so it's very exciting. I want to congratulate everybody involved with the Meg, including our clerk, Janice. It was a huge success. The trees were beautiful, and I think Selectman Riley won a tree.
I did.
Congratulations to you, but it was, it was really.
A dog tree.
Beautiful event. Really well attended. And I also want to comment about our veterans. I mean, we talked about the, the ceremony, which of course was beautiful, and what they did at the Belmonte School. Selectman Chicalini talked about that. I, I think that we, we really appreciate, we, we thank our veterans for our service. I want to thank Paul Castilleri again for these beautiful flags that are behind us, and, and we appreciate your service and everything that you do to keep us healthy and safe, and again, for us to enjoy the freedoms that we have today. So thank you for that. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to Anthony and Jeff, and Mike, and Corinne, and Scott, and Janice, and Art, and Frank, and Maureen, and Andrew, and Frank, and Len, and all, everyone watching, our audience. I mean, this is a time for Thanksgiving, being with family, and time to kind of sit back and think about what's most important to you, and of course, it's, it's family and our community. I, I think that's the most important to all of us.
Madam Chairman, I just have, before you close.
Of course.
I have one more announcement.
Of course.
That, just for information. So we, we, we're, just so everybody's aware, and we're going to, they already put something out at the schools this week. The Belmonte Courtyard in the front there, we're going to be, we pushed that back into the spring. Reason being is that we have a pretty good price on the bid. We had a contractor that hasn't had experience in doing winter concrete and winter work, so rather than sort of get into this thing where it may not, it may be problematic and having issues, we sort of had a meeting and discussed this the last week, a week and a half, that it's better to push this off into the spring so that we can do it correctly and don't run into the issues with the temperatures and, and a contractor that didn't have experience doing winter concreting and these type of projects. So just wanted to let everybody know that, and, but we, we've already awarded the contract, and this, I think, was the smartest move, rather than sort of try to rush it. They were supposed to have started a few months back, and it sort of, it took them a longer time to get some of the approvals and different things, but just wanted to let everyone know that in case anybody had any questions. The schools have already put that out, I think, this week to, to the students and parents.
Thank you. I quickly want to mention, too, that the Saugus United Parish Food Pantry sent us all a thank you. They appreciated. All five Selectmen participated, and thank you, Selectman Riley, for bringing the needs to our attention, and we appreciate everybody dropping by with their donations. We do have one last citizen's comment on the agenda. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And that's seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are adjourned. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.